Okay, I'd like to thank you everyone for being here tonight. We're, this is just a workshop with board members. And do we have others in attendance, Mr. Grady Hunt, our attorney, and also Dr. Gordon Burnett is here with us. And Mr. Cole Wilkins is handling the technology. And we have two ladies we'll introduce shortly. Tonight, starting now at a little after 4:30, and we'll go a couple hours tonight. And we're just dealing with different topics, dealing with, concerning with the board members. I would say, folks, when we get started, it's not a normal meeting where I'm going to recognize you. If you have questions, just ask Ms. Sawinski or Dr. Emery. You can direct them to them. And I would just say, we're here for a couple hours, so please be mindful of everyone's time as far as if we go through things quickly and maybe get as much done as we can. And also in the morning, the actual workshop starts in the morning at 8:30. We'll have some sandwiches here early, about 8:15, 8:10, if you'd like to come by and get one of those. And we do have some refreshments in the other room next door. Okay? Mr. John, if you would, please open us with a word of prayer.
Amen to God's great Lord. We come to you asking you to bless this meeting. We thank you for the speakers that come here today to give us some knowledge. We ask that you allow us to take in this knowledge and use it to build up your school system, Lord. We thank you for all the many blessings, and we give you all the praise and glory. Amen.
Amen. And folks, since this is being viewed, I listened the other day to the policy committee meeting, and I know we've heard some information about this, and there's some folks checking on our system in here. But do be mindful, if papers are moved, it is very loud on what they're viewing at home. So please be very careful if we're moving papers around because all of us is doing it. It does take away from whatever the speaker is saying. So at this time, Dr. Emery and Ms. Sawinski, you ladies have come forward. And folks that are listening, both of these ladies work with DPI and have been very accessible to us and provided us with input with various things. And they're coming tonight to do some presentations and lead a workshop for us. And it's up front, Ms. Dr. Emery, you first, or?
I think we're gonna start together, but-
Yeah, okay.
Just thank you so much for having us back. We're excited to be back with you tonight. And it's been just a little while. The last time we were here was quite a momentous occasion. And we hear nothing but good things about leadership and leadership, kids back in school. Seems like it's been a really positive week getting the kids back on campus. And we are happy to be here tonight to sort of walk you through, we're going to engage you. So this is not going to be Bev and Jessica speak. We really want to involve you in some conversation about what you need. We did look at feedback you have given us over time, feedback that the chair collected, and really focusing tonight and tomorrow on two big policies that clarify board member roles and responsibilities, but try to do that in a way that it meets your specific needs and some of the issues that maybe you have faced. I just want to, I just want to tell you that this is, it's not typical. I want you to understand this is courageous. A lot of times, working on what we need to work on ourselves is not something we like to do. Sometimes it's a little uncomfortable. So our goal is to make this fun. Tonight, we're going to really work more on just engaging you, a little teaming, identifying and sort of narrowing issues that you may face as a board member. We know there's a football game or multiples tonight with football season starting. And so we timed this so for anybody who had kids or grandkids or neighbors or wanted to get there. So we're going to stick really close to our time tonight. And then in the morning, we'll take what we gather from you. Jess and I are hanging out here this evening, and we're going to modify some of the scenarios. But tomorrow is really going to be sort of case study engagement. We're gonna, we may role play a little bit to try to make it funny, but we're going to bring some real things that we hear from you, and then we're going to problem solve them together. And our goal, before we wrap up tomorrow, is that we agree with, we meaning board, on some specific behaviors or actions that we will commit to that help us be a better board. And we, that will be you. You will decide that. You will decide what, what those steps may be. And we really appreciate the timing. We know you're, what, 60 days in with the, with the new superintendent? And so part of this is not only how we interact with each other, but how we interact with administration as well. I also want to share, I've shared with a couple of you who've asked about new role. I am sort of moving over in the agency and will focus all of my work on the district and regional support model that Jessica helps lead in this region. Also managing a pretty big chunk of CARES Act dollars that support districts and schools. And in doing so, we have identified districts that will get a district coach. And I have been lucky enough to get to stay with you. Instead of hiring someone else, I'm going to get to step in as the coach for Robinson County. And what I would say to you about that is that it saves us some CARES money, so I can't write you a check. But training, or support, or other services, because you're not paying, we're not paying more money for a coach for you, there may be some other things we can do to support you, whether that's training as a board, whether it's training for administration. We also are in the process of negotiating some really incredible principal training, leverage leadership, which some of you may have heard about. And we're, instead of, instead of launching those statewide, we're going to take a deep dive in some districts. So we've really been talking with Dr. Williamson about how he would like to see that happen. But are there some ways that Robinson could be lifted up and principals here get training before anybody in the state would get that opportunity? So we're really excited about continuing this partnership, and we hope when you go home tomorrow, you'll still be excited about having us here and working with us. Yes?
We're gonna see if we can get, Cole is so wonderful. I know you all know that. But we just want to extend our thank you to Cole and also to Ms. Patty for helping us get organized tonight. You have such a wonderful team here, and everyone is always so welcoming. So we thank you for that. And like Dr. Emery said, we're excited to be here with you, and we're excited to have fun and to kind of get to know one another. And you have committed a Friday night and a Saturday morning. So like, wow. I mean, seriously, that's, that's really appreciated because it's not typical that we would, we would get this opportunity. So we want to maximize it. And the first picture that we had, and then it disappeared. Here we go. It's back. Is the road. It's a journey. And I thought about these pine trees as I saw this, and I thought, every time I come to Robinson County, I am on streets just like these to get to your district. And you have been on a journey. We've been here now two years, and I'm just proud of it. And I say that with all sincerity because the work that you do in leading this board, leading this district, is not easy work. In the two years that we've been engaged with you, you have had personnel changes, significant personnel changes. You've tackled consolidation, closing community schools. But you've ended up always coming back together as a board in leading and in truly in the spirit of what is best for the children in this system. So to that, I say thank you. And one of the things that we have been part of is some small conversations with you throughout these two years. So to get this time with you as a collective tonight and tomorrow, to really dig into the operations of a board and the code of ethics for a board, and how that looks and how you operationalize your work moving forward, is just going to be one more star that you can shine in this system. So I sincerely say thank you. And Dr. Emery, I don't know if you have any more about the journey, but, but it's been a wonderful one. So with that said, we're going to keep rolling because this is what we're here to do. It's to plan. This is what boards do. You guys are responsible for the governance of this system, for making tough policy decisions, for making those tough calls on finance and personnel and some of those things that are presented to you. And not all of those decisions that you make are popular. But if you keep your North Star, as our new state superintendent likes to say, where it should be, which is on the best outcomes for the children in Robinson County, it's all going to end up, all of the decisions that you have will be focused in the right way. So tonight and tomorrow, that's exactly what we're going to be getting into, is more of the plan. All right. So, but I said we're gonna have some fun tonight, and we're gonna get to know each other a little bit better. So to kind of get our blood going on this Friday evening, I want to do a little activity with you called Never Have I Ever. How many of you have ever heard of this game before? Right? Okay. So it's pretty simple. If on the screen, the statement, "You have never ever," I want you to stand up. Okay? So "Never have I ever," if that applies to you, stand up at your seat. Ready? Is everybody ready? Here we go. "Never have I ever run out of gas." Oh my gosh. And I'm the only one standing. That has truly happened to me. I am so proud. You are all so responsible. Here we go.
Wait a minute. We may have it backwards.
Yeah, wait. Goodbye, goodbye.
Are you ready?
I have it backwards. Are we, we sitting down, "If we've never run out of gas?"
Stand up if you have, "Never have I ever run out of gas." So you would stand up if you've never run out of gas.
Okay, so you're the only one standing. Those of us who are sitting, we all have run out of gas.
Oh, okay. Great. Okay.
Yeah, we run out.
Yeah.
I would be sitting too. Thank you. Okay. All right. Are you ready?
Yes.
I need to get my own rules of my game straight. All right, Cole, help me out here. Next one. "Never have I ever sang karaoke."
Yeah, never done it. Stand up.
Never done it. Stand up. "Ever have I ever sang karaoke?" Right. Anybody have a special song that you want to shout out? What song did you sing karaoke? What you got, Mr. Smith?
Pretty Woman.
Pretty Woman. All right. Awesome. That's great. So we'll know, you know who the singers are in the group now. All right, Cole, what's?
There's other circumstances that cause that.
All right. "Never have I ever planted a garden." If you've never planted a garden, stand up. All right. I would suspect that we are all gardeners at some point, flowers, vegetables. And I'm so excited. It's about that time of year. So I'm ready.
Planted one last year. That's first, I planted one when I was about 18 or 19. I planted one last year.
You're gonna do it again this year?
My brother called me yesterday, wanted to know if we're gonna do it because he's got the tractor. I said, I talked to my wife.
It's a little wet. It's a little-
It's a little wet too. Anyway.
You know, this good old southeastern North Carolina weather, I saw a meme this week that said, "We are in the spring of deception." And I thought, that is so true. As a former, my family owned a Muscatine grape vineyard out of Fayetteville, North Carolina. And never did it ever fail that we would not have ice on those vines just at the most critical point of those buds busting open. So we are in the spring of deception. So I'd hold off on that garden. He might want to till it, but let's don't plant it yet.
I know.
All right. "Never have I ever broken a bone." Wow. Four of you have never broken a bone. That's awesome. Anybody else want to say what bone they broke?
I broke my ankle. Yeah.
Your wrist, your arm?
Ankle.
The ankle. Oh, man. Yep.
One little foot.
Finger.
All right. "I've broken my wrist and some ribs working on a chicken house." That's another story. All right. "Never have I ever served detention or been suspended from school."
Never have I ever. I want pretty still, but I come close a bunch. No, I ain't gonna know. I don't even know.
Love it. Thank you for your honesty on that one. All right. "Never have I ever climbed out of a window." Never have I ever climbed out of a window. All right.
Had good intentions.
Discuss the situations of climbing out windows later, but yes, there you go. We got some, we got some nimble folks in the room tonight.
Hurts when you fall on your head.
I bet it does.
Or your mom shuts the window after you've snuck out and you can't get back in.
There you go. All right. Few more. "Never have I ever slept outside for an entire night."
Oh, no. Stuff like that.
All right. So we've got some campers in the room. All right. Excellent. "Never have I ever ridden a roller coaster." All right. So we got to get you on one.
No, I thought you said, you stand up if you have been on one, right?
"Never have I ever ridden one." Have you ridden one? Or have you ridden one?
I've ridden one.
All right. So we've all had roller coasters. And the last year, I think we can all say that we have been on one. So I think we are all officially on a roller coaster. All right. "Never have I ever attempted a trendy diet." Never attempted a trendy diet. Stand up. Well, you go, Dr. Ramell.
Yeah, I eat what I want to and when I want to and then get-
There you go. I don't, I love that philosophy. That's awesome. All right. "Never have I ever binge watched an entire series in one day." Never have I ever binge watched-
Never done it.
Entire day.
Don't you stand up, Mr. Santa. They better.
All right. So somebody who did binge watch one, what was your favorite?
Stand up, Ms. Smith.
Yellowstone.
Yellowstone. All right. Anybody else want to say which series they binged? Mine's Ozark. We, every time it comes out, we have to watch a whole new season. All right. "Never have I ever locked my keys in my car."
Ooh.
Stand up if you have.
What now?
If you have locked your keys in, you stand up.
If you, if you have never locked, if you have locked, never have, no, never have I ever, you've never locked your keys in your car.
Can you stand up?
No, I can't do that.
All right. Yeah, it's just a thing. They try to help us out now with these remote things, but you know. All right. And I think we've got just a couple more. "Never have I ever owned a pet."
I don't do pets. I don't, yeah, I don't do pets.
A pet? All right.
Ah.
A pet? All right. "Never have I ever forgotten why I came into a room."
Oh my goodness.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's definitely a guilty one for me.
It's the other way around. "Ever have I ever remembered why I came in?"
That's it. And now the only real fix to that is walking out of the room and coming back into it. It's crazy. All right. "Never have I ever eaten a, eaten wild game, like rabbit, or deer, or bear."
Correct.
Never have I done, never have I eaten it. All right. So we've all tasted a little of things on the wild side. And "Never have I ever traveled out of the country."
Oh, wait a minute.
Never been out of the country. You would stand up.
Well, good night.
All right. So we've got some travel under our belt in this room. And next one up, oh, and that was it. So we learned a little bit about each other. We've got some window climbers, some karaoke singers, some binge watchers, right? Some broken bones along the way. But these are the things that connect us. And I think that one of the things that we have to remember is we all have shared experiences, and sometimes we don't have shared experiences. So how in those circumstances can we come together around those things that we either have done or we haven't? So that's, that's part of building a team. It's part of building relationships. So we're going to switch gears now, and I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Emery to take us through our next exercise.
Now we know what we want to ask you about after, after that, right? We have a great time. So one of the things that we know on any team that is critical, and you identified it early on, particularly in some of our small group meetings, has to do with, if you want to pop us up the next slide, has to do with trust, right? And we know that we're, we're high performing teams. And we know that we're, we're high performing teams are really always built on a foundation of trust. And trust doesn't mean we have to be best friends or hang out together or ride roller coasters together. It's really up to each of us, right? What our sort of recipe is for that. So in this next activity, which really is more serious, we're going to ask you to share two things. One person that you completely trust. And we're not giving names here. My dad or, so, you know, who is that person in relationship to you? One person that you completely trust. And then we're also going to ask you to give us one reason. Why is that person someone that you completely trust? What is that characteristic that makes that relationship of trust there? And so I'm going to give you just a few minutes to think about that. And then if somebody wants to volunteer to be our first person to share.
You want to start with me?
I'm happy to start with you.
My wife. And the reason she knows me better than anybody else, so.
Excellent.
That's the bottom line. You better don't get caught, is all I can say.
It probably one of my friends I met when I went in law enforcement, the Sheriff Department. And many of them, to this day, still tight, were like brothers. Always had his back and he always had mine.
So having each other's back is the piece that, right? And that's, that's real in that world, right? For sure.
Well, I'm like Randy, I mean, I trust my wife for sure and, because she's a good woman, got good moral and ethical character about her. And I feel real good about the situation.
Can't hardly hear y'all for the air conditioner or the heat.
See, my wife calls her.
Thing with me, my wife, because she's honest with me. She, whether it's something I want to hear or not, she, she can tell me.
Exactly.
That's important.
Very much so.
Collectively, my parents, because they never give me any reason not to trust them.
So that, that long time behavior, you saw it up close, right? Awesome.
I would have to say my mama, she, she never been to anybody else, so.
I have to say my granddaughter, because she always speaks from the heart and she tells me what's on her mind, whether I like it or not.
Dr. Emery?
Well, since I've lost my husband and my parents, someone leaving is an acquaintance. And that acquaintance is nonjudgmental and they seem to lead me to make the decision. And they have a way that they open up the conversation. When I share with them, they say, have you thought about? And they lead me, I think ethically and morally, to a better decision or the right decision.
So I'm also hearing how they approach you. It's not telling, but.
And they're nonjudgmental.
Good, good, good.
My daughter, and she, she was a very good child and young person and she's grown into a wonderful young woman. And she has children of her own and now that my wife has, has passed, she checks up on me long distance, most of the time. She lives in Raleigh. And I really, I really do appreciate that. And, and then when she can, she's very busy. When she can, she comes to the house and spends a day or two with me. And I just really appreciate that.
I'm going to pick on some of these other folks who are board members because our collective answers, I have a motive for collective answers. So Cole, I'm going to pick on you back there behind the screen. The person you trust and why?
I'd probably have to say my mother, because she's always been there with her life's ups and downs and.
Always rely on mom. Jess?
My husband, because he, we, we live stressful lives and I can be my authentic self with him and he can be his authentic self with me. And it's just easy. So we can, we can be each other's truth.
I'd probably say my dad, just because he's probably been in a lot of same situations or experiences that I've had, you know, growing up. So he gave me pretty good advice and I trust that advice.
I would, I would concur. My dad is sometimes a little scruffy, hard on, hard on me, but the one person on the planet who doesn't hold back, right? I mean, tells you exactly what you need to know or hear. So what did we hear in common? What were, what, what were the themes for our person we named, we trust? Character? I heard honesty, right? I mean, we. Faithful.
You knew for a long period of time.
So time, right? It doesn't just, I don't just meet you and, right? We earn it. So, so time is a huge factor here in building trust. I also heard nonjudgmental. They know me and they're still here. My friend is not, I mean, in lots of ways, we talked about not being judged by whoever this person was, right?
Expecting nothing in return.
Ah, say a little more about that.
Well, you know, so, so much of what goes on in our world is on a transactional basis, you know? Someone gives this and, and often they do that, whatever it is, whether it's time, money, effort, intellectual capacity. And often they expect something in return for that. Jessica and I were talking a while ago, we both agreed that the pandemic has kind of leveled it in a lot of ways. And one is that we, we're more conscious that everybody breathes because we're all wearing masks, you know? But, but we, we agree that we have both, we have seen people stepping up and going the extra mile for people. And certainly that applies to my daughter, whom I, she's a medical person herself. But I, I see, thank goodness, you know, something positive, more and more of that going on where, you know, we, we do, I say we, I'm using that collectively, more people are doing what they're doing because they want to see someone else prosper and, and not just, let me just see what I can get for me. And I see that as, as, that's going on and it's, it's, it's on a roll, if you will. And I, I'm glad for that.
I ask you to say more about that because I believe it's why you're all here. And, and with 40 years in this business, I've never known people run for the school board because they think they're going to get a good check. Or, I mean, if you, if you took your hours and you divided it by, I, I don't know that you'd get 25 cents. I mean, I, I know this is not the reason people run for the Board of Education. And most times people don't run for the Board of Education because they want to be a senator. Most of the time, people run for the Board of Education for this piece we're talking about here. I want to give back. I want to do something for my community. I want to better the lives of the people, the children that I serve. And so I also, I appreciate you expounding on that because I think most Board of Education members, while you may have certain issues that are important to you, that may not be important to other people, there might have been something that happened to you in your past that caused you to say, you know, I'm going to run for the board and I'm going to address that issue. I'm going to try to fix it. Generally, people don't stay in these roles unless they have that, that interior, ulterior, intrinsic motivation to try to give back. It's not to get something in, in return. So we, we wanted to start there just a little bit because we want to encourage that trust here, whether you're relatively new to the board or you've been in this role. This work is so important that we're able to speak whatever is important to us, that we're able to share, we're able to be candid about working through this process of what is our role. And so Cole, if you'll move us on here. We looked at the topics that you have given us over time. You'll remember the last time that Jessica and I were here, we did small groups with you. And pretty much every group said, you know, once we get a new superintendent, we need to go back and really, as a board, work on what is our role? How do we best operate and operate efficiently? So we wanted to share back with you those things that you've shared with us and that you also shared with your chair. And in taking those and trying to match them up in your folder, we felt like you already had two policies. And kudos again to you, they look like they have been fairly recently revised that really addressed this. So in your, in your yellow folder, you have policy 2120, which is Code of Ethics for Board Members. And then you also have policy 2000 Operational.
What we want to talk about is just the fact of authorizing documents and what guides the work of this board, right? So let's spend a couple of minutes there before we begin, because Dr. Emery's taking us tonight and wherever we're going to really spend our time is what is in this folder. But we also want to just get back, if we can get back to the, there we go. Cole, you're teaching me well here. Let's talk about what are authorizing documents? What does that mean? And what authorizing documents currently exist that guide your work? Now, Mr. Grady, you can't play this game because I know you know them all, right? So let's think about that. What, what do you think it means to say an authorizing document?
Asked your question again. Now, what came to me?
Yep. So what do you think it means when I say an authorizing document? What do you think that could be?
Legislation?
Yeah, absolutely.
Policies.
Policies, legislation, federal law, state law. So when we say the word authorizing documents, it is the foundational work that you do your business based on. It is the documents that you lean back on when you are making decisions. And so we're going to spend a little bit of time talking about those tonight, but specifically, we've listed some already. A couple of you can advance me, sir. There we go. Federal laws. Can anybody think of any federal laws that your system has to abide by? Just throw them out there.
IDEA.
IDEA, spoken from a former head of that department. Absolutely. And that's the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, which also actually falls up under another big important federal law when we talk about our Civil Rights Code, section 504. Can you think of other federal laws?
Title nine.
Title nine. Boom. Was that, was yours too?
Yeah.
Title nine, big one. Gotten a lot of attention in the last few years.
Funding.
Funding. So some of our authorizing documents, right, are tied to our funding, like how we can spend our Title I dollars, our federal program dollars. All of those have legal ramifications as to how we can and cannot use them. And we use those titles to help us know what we can and can't do. Other federal laws that we're forgetting.
The Constitution book, specifically the First Amendment.
There you go. All of those things apply, right? Our whole constitution. And how our constitution even works within the confines and constructs of the work that you do as a board. I'm sure that you have had, and Mr. Grady would, would affirm, that you've had questions about constitutional rights, freedom of speech, what students can and cannot wear to school. I mean, all of those things fall right into that, that work. Other thoughts? Have we forgotten any big ones?
The big federal ones you're seeing, have seen and are in process, which are CARES Act, ESER I, ESER II, and possibly depending on what happens in the next week, ESER III, which are huge.
Even bigger dollars.
Federal dollars you will, as a board, appropriate and authorize.
That's right.
And they do come, they come with strings about what you can and cannot spend them for.
That's right.
Someone mentioned Title IX, but you have a lot of other titles, Title VII and VII.
Yes.
Two, so those are hip pockets of what you got to do and you have to follow.
Absolutely. And you know, the thing about federal dollars is typically it's the smallest amount of money we get. We can't really say that right now with CARES, but the federal stuff is what always seems like it gets so big. Like you can really, really step into some hot water with the federal pieces, particularly when we think about IDEA and some of the other ones. All right. So you're still sitting here, which means that we've not scared you off yet about authorizing documents. That's a good thing. So let's talk about state laws. What are some state laws?
Leandro case.
Leandro, big one. Definitely. Robinson County is a plaintiff in the Leandro case. Other state laws that we, that we adhere to or that you can think of that particularly apply to your work here?
Well, recently, the pandemic, the, the whole list of laws that they enacted for us to try to get through the pandemic, those are the most recent.
You are exactly right. And it's not only the laws, but there are also executive orders.
Yeah.
Right? That we've all learned a lot more about as we go through. And who executive orders apply to and who they don't. In many cases, believe it or not, executive orders do not apply to public schools. So it's an interesting piece. But that's why you have this attorney who is helping you decipher all of that, because he's trying to keep making sure that the authorizing documents that you are required to work from, that you are aware of and fully appraised on as you're making critical decisions about bringing children back, how you bring children back. I'm just thinking about our current state. In North Carolina, we actually have a whole set of North Carolina public school laws, most of which mirror some of the federal pieces. But then the state has their nuanced versions of those as well. Any others that you can think of from the state level that we're forgetting?
I think the big ones are about teacher licensure and requirements for staff that are state, state driven, that don't give boards a lot of flexibility or authority to change.
Oh, yes. So hiring, contracts, all of those pieces. Mr. Grady, we're talking about state law and state policies that boards have to utilize to make good decisions. And we've told them that you have to keep them straight. Like this is, you are keeping them straight with all of these pieces.
That, that green book that Mr. Grady carries around, and I'll always got one.
I know.
You got yours, Mr. Grady? Green book. With that.
That's it.
Yeah.
That's it. That is the, the Journal of North Carolina Public School Law, right? That's, that's a huge authorizing document, all right? So anytime you're making decisions, it's so important to remember to look, to see, is there a law, a policy, guidance, an executive order that we should be utilizing as we are making the difficult decisions that we are faced with as a board? You also have state Board of Education policies and you have local policies that you have the authority to set, right? You are the, you are the jurisdiction of your local policies, as long as they are in keeping with all of the other authorizing documents. Mr. Grady?
One of, one of the things with the laws, policy, state or federal, and we get money coming into the county and you hear, you got money, you can spend this money here, spend this money there. But the money comes in and there's restrictions on all money that comes in that we have to follow. They say, well, you can spend this this way. Title I, you can spend this amount this way.
Right.
And that's a never ending thing as far as dealing with these policies and laws, state and federal. Child nutrition, we didn't mention it a while ago, but the child nutrition funds, it's child nutrition only. Sometime people think you can spend that money anywhere. You can't. It's child nutrition and it has to take care of that program. And other programs are the same way.
Absolutely.
We do not have a lot of leeway in how we can spend a pot of money.
100% yes. So federal dollars all have restrictions, every one of them. State dollars, I think I can say affirmatively, all have some level of restriction. The real flexibility of funding that you would have locally is any tax revenue-driven local funding that is, that is yours based on the, the county of Robinson. That is your most flexible funds. But, Mr. Craig, you are exactly right. Everything else has strings. And you got to know where the strings are. Because as a board, as you're setting local policy and you're making decisions, you want to know that you are straight and narrow on those. But as Dr. Emery said earlier, for our time together, we're going to focus on two of your policies. Two policies, and now my understanding is that you utilize the School Boards Association of North Carolina to guide your public school policy. And, Mr. Grady, is it correct to say that those policies are based a lot on what is in that green book as well as what is also in other authorizing documents that we are required to uphold?
Or?
All right, perfect. So we have two policies that we're going to be working with. 2020, which is the operational goals of the board, which is here. Can you scroll up for me back there, Cole? I just want to look at something at the bottom. So the operational goals here was last revised in your district on April 9th, 2019. Okay, so that tells me, in looking at this authorizing document, that it has been reviewed within the last year and a half. Okay, that's, that's pretty good, wouldn't you say, Dr. Emery?
Absolutely.
All right, and then Policy 2021, which is the Code of Ethics for Board Members. If we scroll up at this one, we're going to see that this one was actually just reauthorized on February 9th. So you guys have been actively looking and talking about this particular policy. So what we would like to do tonight, with our time that we have left, and thinking about going into tomorrow, is we really, really want to dig into these two authorizing documents. We want you to make sure that you have thoroughly vetted these, these two particular documents. And then tomorrow, our goal is to find ways to make these policies come to life, using the real-life world that you live in as board members, okay? So with that said, we're going to jump to the next slide. All right. And we're going to do a literacy strategy that many of your teachers actually do in the classroom. It's called text rendering. So text rendering is taking a document and finding the most important pieces. It's to collaboratively together construct meaning to clarify and to expand our understanding of the text that we have in front of us. So the texts that we're going to use tonight are your policies. 2020 and 20, I mean, I'm sorry, 2000 and 2120. So I want you to take a few minutes now. I want you to review the documents that you have. And I want you to mark, and you have two policies. I want you to do this for each of them, if you would. Take a few moments, review them, mark the sentence that stands out as significant to you, one sentence. I want you to mark a phrase or phrases that you see as most significant from your vantage point. And I want you to highlight the words. So if you look at one sentence, one or two phrases, and then highlight the words for both policies. Everybody clear on that? We good? Knock yourself out.
Yes, sir.
Mention of policy 2021. Mm-hmm. About 2020.
I'm sorry, you got the last one. I just keep calling them the wrong thing.
Okay.
Just haven't had quite enough caffeine today.
I was wondering if I would just miss it.
No, sir, you're square.
So we do this.
2000 and 2021.
A few more minutes than the most of our time here. We just be doing that one. Everybody doing okay?
Yeah.
Adam? We can, we can stop in between if you, uh, we just don't want to, want to make good use of your time. So what's happening here is we're going to start with the sentence. So we're going to do once around. We're going to ask you to share the sentence that really stood out for policy 2000. This is 2000. We'll start with 2000. And then we'll do the same thing for 2120. Did you start with 21? Is it better if we start?
Yeah, 2120 was on top on mine.
That's what I did also.
You spent, Tom, I'm sorry, say that again. I'm, I'm having.
Um, 2120 was on top, so.
Okay, that works.
Let's start with 2120, Jess.
Can we just say that with, with 20,000? 2000 is really like how the board is organized and basically the jurisdictional piece. Where we really want to spend our time is 2120. So, Mr. Grady, do you have any words of wisdom about 2000 that you want to share before we jump into 20?
The first sentence is the guiding star.
Read it out loud for us.
Board recognizes the trust and accountability it owes its citizens, staff, parents, and students in the manner in which it transactions the business of the school system.
Sounds like, sounds like a plan. So we're all going to highlight that one. All right? So we're going to spend some, let's spend our time then in 2120, yes.
So Dr. Manuel, how about you start us off with what one sentence did you pull out of 2120 that sort of struck a chord with you?
Uh, I think the need to obey all pickable state and federal laws. Uh, that, uh, to me, the foundation of one foundation, I can't say the foundation, but an important foundation.
Good. What sentence did you, Mr. Lawson?
Well, I'm like Mr. Grady, the very first one that I read. My thing is when it says, uh, North Carolina general statutes, when it says GS in front of it, that's the law. That's what you got to go by. So my thing was, as the board recognizes collectively and individually, all members of the board must adhere to a code of ethics as required by, uh, General Statute 160A-86 and General Statute 115C-47, um, 57. That's the law. You, I mean,
You have to.
You better hear to that. I, I mean, it's like 55.
And that's, that's the required training as well. The fact that, that you have to have what's every two years, that you have to go through the ethics training. So the law is there and it also requires that you, as board members, have that, that training. Anybody else want to share your sentence?
We're going all the way around.
Everybody's going to.
Everybody, we're, we are talking.
Go ahead.
An ELA teacher right now watching would be like, oh, no, you got to go around.
Oh, my.
Go around. That's right.
Mine was, uh, one board member, after the requirements. Mine was number two, the need to uphold integrity and independence of the board members' office. And then also number four stood out a little bit to me, too. The need to perform faithfully the duties of the office.
Excellent. So integrity of the office and the individuality of, of the, of the member as well as the faithful execution of. Excellent. All right, we're teacher, we're the teacher thing, so I, I guess.
Let's go to number three then, because go in, in the middle, it says avoid impropriety. And then, uh, all board members must, uh, and all board members' official duties.
Avoid impropriety, number three?
Yeah. Avoid impropriety, and then the board members and board members' official duties.
Chair?
So we just looking at A, right? Just the A part up there?
Nope, you can look at any of them. Anything?
Anything from 2120?
Anything?
Anything.
I'm good. Two things that stuck out, and I couldn't do one, but, uh, under P part, uh, number six, work with other board members to establish effective board policies and to delegate authority for the administration of schools to the superintendent. For me, that's, uh, strong. And then also number 12, as an individual, uh, to refrain from investigating or attempting to resolve complaints received personally, but instead directing them to where it needs to go to the central office. That's in essence what it said.
So 12 really supports six.
Yes.
It really does.
Superintendent's in charge and then let the superintendent and the people here run the school system.
But, but board sets the policy in which we govern the superintendent.
Yes.
Good.
Vontae, we sharing, we sharing this, it's sharing time now.
Number three, um, upon the part B, render all decisions based on available facts and independent judgment and refuse to surrender that judgment to individuals or special interest groups.
Excellent. So we're going to make decisions based on what's in front of us and factual evidence.
I have to agree with Vontae. Three and seven and part B stuck out. That mean render all decisions based on available facts. Number seven, communicate to other board members and the superintendent expressions of public reaction to board policies and school programs.
And so there's that communication loop, right? Why I got elected, why people voted for me. They expect to be able to tell me things and that I can be a, a voice for them inside this organization in an effective way.
But there's always two sides to a story when you're reporting back from the community.
Yes, we all.
You have to be, you have to be careful.
The first version is never the factual version that we just referenced. There's always some more to be learned.
Mr. Brewer, what number was that one?
That was, uh, section B, three and seven.
Thank you. All right. Okay, okay. Thanks.
All right, Dr. Manuel went, uh, Mr. Gen three.
Um, number four, auto civility to students, employees, and all elements of the community by encouraging the free expression of opinion by all board members and engaging in respectful dialogue with fellow board members on matters being considered by the board. Can I expand on that?
Sure.
A little bit. Our, I say our, I, I'm talking about each of us individually have an image in the community. And that image is so important of how people perceive us as not only board members, but first as a person and a reliable, uh, person in terms of, uh, all of these different adjectives that we are looking at. I mean, uh, uh, integrity, possessing integrity and, uh, being, uh, faithful to the work of the school system. We, we, be honest, we're here because people saw that in us to begin with. But now we need to maintain that. We need to keep that image proper. And, and all these other sentences, all these other, uh, standards, uh, feed into that, in my opinion. We possess all of these traits or, or as many of them as possible.
We'll dive into this a little tomorrow, but I, I would challenge you because there are lots of different schools of thought. And, and when I teach in a graduate, graduate program, I try to help those folks aspiring to leadership who have a mentality that they can take off their title and leave it someplace that they're, they're, they're wrong. And, and I, I've lived my entire career this way. And I believe it applies to you whether you want it or not. You can't stop being a school board member. When I was a superintendent and my children were in school, my husband always had to go be the parent at the conference. Because I could say, well, I'm just going into the middle school as a mom. I'm Nick's mom. No, you're not, because everybody in the school sees you as the superintendent. You're not just, you know, a, a, a person who, who used to, to work for FedEx, right? Now that you're on the board, you can't take that off. And I think that speaks to part of what you're saying is, uh, we'd like to not always be under that microscope, but it just doesn't go away as long as you have that trust of your community in the, in the title. So Jess, are we now going to phrase?
We're going to a phrase. And I'm, we're trying to see if we can just highlight within the, within the text because what we're going to start seeing is some patterning coming on here. We saw some with your sentences. We saw some overlap for sure.
A lot, you had a lot of different, you brought up a lot of different things here. So this time it's not the sentence, it's just a phrase.
So one phrase.
One, one phrase, and if, if it's here already, then you're going to highlight it for us, right?
I'm actually going to try to highlight it readily in here.
Do you want to go first again?
No, I, I was going to go back to what you were doing, but it might be a deeper discussion for tomorrow. Number eight and 12 of the, um, 2120. That, I think, merits some discussion of the misperceptions of what board members supposed to do, maybe. Number eight and 12, and I think those two, being a dual person, being on this side and on the other side, those are the perceptions that the community sees that we can do, but we really can't do.
Absolutely.
And I think maybe tomorrow's discussion, just my opinion now, that we may hit eight and 12 hard to maybe have some discussion about it.
We actually have some case scenarios that lead right there, right? That as one, I, I'm not a board, right? And what does that look like? And, and I think we, you all have hit on that in some of your commitment pieces here as well. All right, now we're going to start with phrases. We're, we're going to do this one in order. We started with Dr. Manuel, but we're going, we're going to start back with you, Mr. Lawson. Just go all the way around. A phrase from 2120, just a phrase now.
Okay, um, B two would be, um, make policy decisions.
Perfect. Good way to come right out of the gate modeling. Make policy decisions.
We're going to get this right. I'm learning all how.
She's going to fake, she likes the technology. That's why we have her there and not me. Mr. Simmons.
Integrity.
Inte.
Make it stick with it, integrity about it.
Uh, okay, good. That was in your sentence and you're right back there. So integrity.
Which number? I'm sorry.
It was, uh, A two.
A.
A.
Cole's helping me on the backside here. Right here. I call it integrity, okay? All right, perfect.
It switched. Oh, that's part of the sentence. Okay, phrase.
Uh, faithfully, the duty, uh, perform faithfully the duties of the office.
Perform faithfully the duties of the office.
That's the number three.
Number three.
A, number three.
A three.
A three.
Wait a minute.
Or is, is that four?
There it is, number four. There it is. We found him. We found him.
My glasses, let me.
Bring them in the morning.
John's got it.
Mr. Lowry?
Uh, B six, um, administration of schools.
Administration of schools is his phrase. Perfect.
Um, B seven, communicate with other board members.
Hmm, nice.
Communicate with other board members. Awesome.
B four, engage in respectful dialogue.
Miss, there you go.
Oh, me, I'm sorry. I was daydreaming. Number five, respect the confidentiality of information.
Your phrase, sir.
Establish effective board policies. Uh, that is B six.
There. Great. We're centering right in here.
Okay, so now we're going to a word. We're going from a phrase to a word. One word. You got it down already.
I'm sorry.
I know where, I know where you're going. Go ahead. We'll, we'll, we'll capture for her.
Obey.
Obey? Good.
Uh, I'm going to go back to the same sentence in there, uh, A, A two and it'd be, uh, independence.
Ah, good, okay.
That one, Dr. Reese?
Independence. Obey, independence.
Official.
Official?
Relationships.
Relationships.
Probably communicate.
Communicate. Excellent.
That's what I was going to say. I'm going to say.
You can say this, you can repeat.
I'm going to say, uh, but I like to, I think we need a, a good cross reference. I'm going to say respect.
Respect.
Civility.
Civility.
Informed.
Informed. So would you group any of those? Do we see some themes there that could overlap?
Communicate, inform.
Well, respect and civility overlap.
Yep, agree.
Relationship.
Indepen.
Go together.
Respect, relationships.
And did you say respect and civility? She keyed up there, yeah.
I love the dichotomy of official and independence. Isn't that really what, where this gets to, right? How, how do I maintain some, you elected me, but I only operate in this larger capacity, you know? So how, what does that look like for me? How do I serve and support as an individual and not get out of my lane as the authority of, of this, of this full board? And we're going to take you there tomorrow. That's really, I think, at the heart of what this is. How, how can I individually be responsive? How can I individually serve but not step over the boundaries of what it's like to be on a board? Good.
Outstanding. I'm not an ELA teacher, but if I was, I would give you all an A plus for that text rendering activity.
We'll take it.
All right. And next time you're in some of your classrooms and you're seeing teachers help students dig in, this actually is a strategy that makes, kind of demystifies big volumes of text, nonfiction particularly. It just helps to unpack it. Because when we can do things in bite-sized pieces, it tends to make a little bit more sense. So I would ask you right now, do you feel like you have kind of taken a deeper dive into one of the policies that guide your work? One of your authorizing documents? Do you feel like you've gotten a little more intimate with it in this text rendering activity? All right, we're going to go even deeper. Are you ready? All right, so we're going to the next line. Afraid to touch it. Whoop, that's morning. Not there yet. There we go. All right, so we're going to dig a little deeper. Because understanding 2120, we can all be cognitively fully aware of what the words say. We can say, yep, we done it. We know what it is. But what we really want to do in digging a little bit deeper is to get to the heart of those situations or circumstances that sometimes might put you at odds with what is listed here, that you have been taking, you took an oath. This is your code of ethics, right? That may put you in slight odds. And I call it like, you know, you're going down the road and you run off a little bit and it's like a rumble strip and you go, whoo, got to get back over, right? So we're going to talk about the rumble strips here a little bit. So we want you to think about situations or circumstances that you think either push the boundaries of these policies or make you question if the circumstance or situation is out of bounds. We want you to think about this from your experience as a board member. These could be things that are happening to you directly that you have witnessed, that historically may have been there. We want you to think about particularly 2120, particularly section B, on those commitments, specific board member commitments. And you've done a great job digging through those, so now you're familiar with them. What we'd like for you to do now is to really think about those circumstances and help us develop the scenarios that we're going to spend time tonight, taking what you provide us now in this next exercise. We're going to take that back tonight and we're going to form up situations and circumstances based on what you're telling us. And the goal for us moving forward will be that for each of these board considerations, these board commitments, that you begin to operationalize what does this look like for our board, for this team that is sitting right here in this room? So it's one thing to say, uh, let's just say, attend our regularly scheduled board meetings as far as possible and become informed concerning the issues. But what does that look like? What does that mean to you as a board? Does that mean you read your packets? Does that mean, I mean, so what does that look like for you? And how are you coming to, um, an agreement? Because those begin to create your norms. And the norms are the things that you hold each other to in the administration of your office, okay?
And I, I think what we would hope you would do, since you identified those specific areas that, that sort of resonated with you, that your actual sort of wanderings or real life challenges that are related to those would be the things you would share. Uh, and, and I, I want to give you an example, uh, if you'll let me indulge a minute. At 34, I was named the superintendent of the Westlake City Schools in Westlake, Ohio. I thought I was hot stuff. I, I was in South Carolina as a principal and I got this job. And I was hired in September of 1991. And I was so naive and unpolitically savvy that I did not realize there was a board of education election that November. So the board that hired me in September, four of those five seats were up for election in November. I didn't pay any attention. This is back before you had much technology. You know, you were looking at paper, newspaper to figure out what was going on in a community. My second week on the job in Westlake City Schools, I arrived at 7:30 and the board chair was in my office, sitting at my desk. True story. Board chair, sitting in my office at my desk. Dr. Mary's four. Mary, gosh, how'd you get in here? Oh, I have keys. I have keys to the building. I have keys to your, I have keys to everybody's offices. So, don't you have a job? So I'm not going to get too deep there. What did I do that was really wrong? I didn't follow a policy. I didn't look at authorizing documents. I didn't have the one-on-one conversation. I changed the locks. That was probably the dumbest thing I could have ever done, right? Because instead of confronting and talking about it and putting it in a context of how we do business, I just did what first came to my head. And thank goodness Dr. Spoor didn't get reelected in November. Because I don't know that I would have lasted very long had she been, had she been reelected when I just changed the locks. So those are the things that we really hope you can actualize in what you share with us. What are those things that confront you that are hard? Some things are hard. You know, you get elected and three people in your neighborhood call you for jobs, right? I mean, to me, that's one of the most common ones that happens to board members. But people expect things from you. And that's really what we hope you will share with us. We, to your, to your earlier discussions about what's important ethically and how do I be an individual? How do I, how do I serve on a board? Really help us define in your own experience what those challenging things have been that help you stay within these commitments? What, what are those real situations that you've dealt with? Does that help? I'm going to ask you to really just give them to us, you know? You can do as many as you want. We put the sheets in your folder. But, um, all we ask you to do is not use real names to protect the innocent here. But if there are scenarios that you have dealt with and some have been on the board for a while, like you said, you've seen both sides of, of how this, how this works. Just other suggestions for how they can get sort of.
Nope. I would just say that in the remaining time that we have together, this is your job. This is your, this is your homework, but not homework. So this is the in-class activity.
Where you go.
Right, right. So.
We'll turn it into some real life activity for tomorrow.
Yep. So on your blue sheets, jot down as many as you'd like. And then we're going to work on these tonight. So help yourself.
Can, can they be just short sentences?
Yeah, short sentences. They don't have to be big stories, just whatever you want to share with us as it pertains to thinking about those board commitments, right, on 2120.
Why don't we put them back up, Jess?
Yes, we can. Yes, sir.
If, uh, is it okay if everybody wants to take a 10-minute break or something?
Yeah, you can self-break, absolutely. This is independent practice at this point, right? So you can get up, you can get yourself a, a refreshment, you can. But, um, when we conclude, when everybody is finished, really, when you're finished with your sections, Mr. Craig, I don't know if you need to bring the meeting to an official close, but this is the conclusion of our, we're, we're just going to be here to help coach and get your, get your answers, okay?
I'm on next to him, Mr. Craig.
I hear you. Sound patient, I guess.
I hear you. So I'm pitching to go.
Okay.